City Council Meeting, please call the roll.
Garza.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Bagwell.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
I'm Mr. Carvallo.
Here, next item, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer will be given by Betty Pinkston. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. We're gonna have word of prayer. Father God, thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to stand in your presence with each and every one that's here, Lord, just to give honor to you and to ask your guidance today, Lord, for our city, Lord, and your blessing upon each and every decision and each and everything that goes on here today. Lord, we know that you are more than aware of what goes on in this world and what goes on here and the sicknesses that plague us. So, Lord, we just want to ask you to touch our nurses, doctors, our first responders, each and every one, Lord, that is on that front line, Lord, to battle this enemy. We thank you for your grace. We ask that you would lead us, guide us, and keep your hand upon our city, Lord, and let us be good warriors for you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item four, a proclamation for Black History Month.
Okay, who is accepting on behalf of the city? Okay, please join me at the podium. Whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience, and whereas African-Americans have played significant roles in the history of Kansas and our community's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working to maintain their culture and history, and whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, took a stance against prejudice to build lives of dignity and opportunity, advanced the causes of civil rights, and strengthened families and communities, and whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenges of African-Americans, and to look to the future to continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore, I, Jade Pyros de Carvallo, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Black History Month. Would you like to say a few words, Darrell?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Hutchinsons, for recognizing this significant month, and we appreciate what you're doing, and we ask you to support the activities that'll be going on to celebrate the accomplishments of a community that's sometimes marginalized and often forgotten, but has made many, many contributions. So, we thank you.
I asked Jeff if we could do a jazz and soul concert today instead of a meeting, but he said there were some very important things on the agenda. That's my joke for today, so it's only going downhill from here. Today, I want to remind us that Black History Month is about celebrating the struggles of black Americans as they demanded their basic rights that many of us have a hard time imagining living without. Rights that many of us have a hard time living without and a time stake for granted. Seriously, think about it. The right to sit where you want to in a bus or in this room, or go eat at any restaurant in town, or attend the same grade school as your white neighbor. Before that, it was a right to live freely, the right to work and to be paid for your labor, the right to not fear law enforcement, the right to be called a citizen of the nation that you were born in, and at the bare minimum, the right to be recognized as a human being. Today, we remember our nation's original sin, and today, we remember the American heroes who refused to accept America as it was and believed in an America as it should be. Today, we remember American heroes who broke free from the chains of slavery, who lived in the glorious promise of our funding documents that all men are created equal, and that all of our efforts should lead to forming a more perfect union. And yet, the struggle lives on. Black folks have called Hutchinson home since the early beginnings of our community. In an article on the Hutchinson News from June 25th of 1972, it claims that former slaves on their way to Nicodemus, the historical black town northwest of Hays, saw Hutchinson as a place they could settle instead. That same article tells stories of the vibrancy the black folks brought to South Main Street in Hutchinson, opening businesses, doctor offices, law offices, and restaurants. With the rise of black-owned businesses in the community came the rise of the KKK. You can go to the Reno County Museum and see pictures of Ku Klux Klan parades marching down Main Street and gathering at what's known now as Memorial Hall. But today is not just about celebrating the struggles, though. We also take some time to celebrate the many accomplishments that black Americans have contributed to our community and our nation, and we look forward to advancing the promise of a more perfect union, making this our city government and every institution and organization in this community a little more perfect. It's a very American thing. Lastly, I want to leave you with a passage from A. Angelus on the Pulse of the Morning. Lift up your faces. You have a piercing need for this bright morning dawning on you. History, despite its wrenching pain, cannot be un-lived, but if faced with courage, need not lift again. Here on the pulse of this new day, you may have the grace to look up and out and into your sister's eyes and into your brother's face, your country, and say simply, very simply, with hope. Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave and Darrell. Next item, please.
Item five, a 2021 crisis response report.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
I wanted to take this opportunity. We've had our crisis response team up and running through about three-quarters of a year, and if you recall, last year was the first year that that team was funded by the city council, and I wanted to give an opportunity to kind of reflect back and show you how that team has performed throughout our first year in operation. And for the new city council members, I wanted to kind of have an opportunity to explain to you a little bit what that crisis response team is all about. I think we all recognize that mental health is a growing problem in our communities, and there's less and less services. And in addition to mental health, we also have substance misuse issues that we have to address. And typically, what happens is when individuals in our community go into crisis, there's nobody else to call but law enforcement. And law enforcement, we're the first ones to readily admit that we're ill-equipped to handle people that are in mental health or substance abuse crisis. That's not what we were trained for. And so, what traditionally has happened in law enforcement circles is that as those individuals move into crisis, officers are called. If they're lucky, they're able to kind of put a Band-Aid on the current situation, and then they're off to the next call. Well, it doesn't solve that individual's problems, and they float in and out of crisis. And eventually, they become so violent that they're a danger to themselves or others, or they commit a crime, and then law enforcement has to take them into custody. It does a couple of things. One, it puts them in the criminal justice system, and what we found in law enforcement is because law enforcement is ill-trained to be able to diffuse and de-escalate those situations, typically, law enforcement results to the only tactic that they have ever known, and that's the use of force on individuals that really are in crisis and need our help, not need us to use force against them. So, the model of the crisis response team is really designed to pair law enforcement officers with professionals in the field, mental health professionals. And in Hutchinson, what we've also paired with are substance abuse professionals to be able to respond together into the field. The officers become specially trained in identifying and working with people who are suffering from a mental health situation or substance abuse. And the mental health professionals and substance abuse professionals learn from our officers on safety and tactical positioning and how to approach those situations. And so, together as a team, the desire is to be able to diffuse and de-escalate those particular situations. So, this is kind of what we're looking at with our crisis response team. They are plainclothes, they work as a team. The hope is that when the team shows up, the individuals or even members of the public, they can't discern who is the police officer and who is the mental health or substance abuse professional. They work as a team in conjunction with one another. There's really two stages to our particular approach. There's the initial stage, and that's dealing with individuals who are in crisis. And like we talked about, the goal there is to be able to diffuse those situations, de-escalate them, and come to a peaceful resolution. And then the second stage, and probably equally as important that people don't realize, is the follow-up stage. And that's what we do on the back end of things in connecting individuals with services in our community. Purpose of the team, handle crisis situations. And the main goal of the program is to divert individuals from the criminal justice system. People that suffer from mental illness, we don't want them in our criminal justice system. And working with Lisa Gleason and the Stepping Up Council, that's one of the things that we really started to focus on. The mayor sits on that particular council. And we had had a lot of programs kind of on the back end to deal with people in mental health that coming out of the jail and reintegrating them. But what we never had in this community before was a program where we could divert people so they hopefully wouldn't end up in the criminal justice system in the first place. So, we kind of have three levels of response when we show up and a person is in crisis. We have a person in crisis, there's been no crime that's been committed, and they haven't been arrested. And so, the idea is to be able to de-escalate that particular situation, and instead of then just abandoning the individual and say, you know, "Good luck, we'll see you tomorrow when you go in crisis," you know, again, the idea is we take that individual and we hand them off to particular services, whether it's substance abuse or mental health services. And then, we follow up with them the next day to make sure they're staying connected with their particular services. They're on medication, if that's what it is, and we follow up with them the next day and the next week and the next month until we're able to verify that they now have stabilized, they're not going to move in and out of crisis, they're connected with the services they need, and they become and remain productive members of our community. The second level of response is a crisis, but a crime has been committed, but there's been no arrest, and these are talking mostly low-level type crimes. Because what we typically see in these situations, the individual breaks out a window or they're criminally trespassing in a business or something of that nature. And so, when we show up, what we want to be able to do is the same thing that we did for our first response, de-escalate that situation and then connect them with particular services. Generally, in those cases, we'll file a criminal report for whatever crime has occurred, but we won't send it forward for prosecution, or we'll work with the city prosecutor and say, "We want this person in these programs" as opposed to the criminal justice system. And they're diverted from the system before they ever move in. And then, of course, the third stage is crisis plus a crime, and maybe they've already been arrested. They could have been arrested by a regular patrol officer before the crisis team was able to intervene. Now, they're in our county jail. So, in those cases, we work with our prosecutor to say, "Hey, can we divert these charges? Can we let them out on an O.R. bond, divert these charges, and let's connect them with mental health professionals or services in our community, and then dismiss those particular criminal charges?" Again, keeping them out of the criminal justice system. So, this is kind of a list of just kind of a overall summary of our calls. One of the things I'd really like to point out is if you look at the right bottom chart there, January, February, and March were months before the crisis response team was initiated last year, and we were not accurately tracking all crisis response calls. We had to put in some additional codes to be able to track particular calls. So, April is really the first month where we got a true representation of how many crisis calls actually occur in our community on a given month, and it was 109 crisis calls that we had been responding to in our community. And so, you can see that throughout the rest of the year, after the crisis response team initiated April 1st, that number has steadily gone down through December. In December, we ended up with 48. So, we had over a 50% reduction in the crisis response calls. Probably the most telling, though, aren't those particular numbers. It's information from my crisis response team. And when that team started, they had a, after they initiated and were able to make contact with individuals that had been in crisis, they had a rolling list of 10 people that they were following up on every day. And as soon as they would get one member off their list stabilized, connected with services, another person in our community would hop on. So, it was truly an overwhelming situation. Now, come the 1st of this year, that list is four to five people, maybe six, on any given day. So, that's a manageable number. So, our team is actively working, four to five people in our community right now that are still in crisis and aren't stabilized. And that's much more manageable than the overwhelming number we had earlier in the year. Just kind of calls for week, you know, how many crisis calls they respond to reference. You can see the top line is patrol response, and the bottom line are the number of calls that the crisis response team handled in our community. And this is probably the most telling slide out of all of them. You look at this, we responded to 911 responses, 179 particular responses. And then, the thing that I've talked about the most was the follow-up on the back end. You can see that the team conducted 114 follow-ups by phone, 117 visits in person. And so, that's really where, after we diffuse the situation and get people out of crisis, that's really where we get the most bang for our buck, is that we're staying with these individuals. That's what I believe makes a successful program. There's other crisis response models out there where they just eliminate the immediate crisis, and there's no follow-up on the back end, whereas we're really focusing kind of on the back end of things. Probably, the thing that I'm most proud of is that if you look down there where it says diverted charges, 14 people in our community over those nine months that the team was, that it was active last year would have been arrested and would have been in our county jail, but instead, we diverted those charges and kept them out of the criminal justice system. You think, well, 14 doesn't sound like that much, but in reality, I think that 14 number is huge. That's 14 people that would have had a criminal record, but now, they're connected with services and they're productive members of our community. That's potentially 14 lives saved in our community. I don't know how you can put a price tag on success like that. Another important thing there for us on the PD side is that crisis response team cleared officers off of a call 58 times last year. So, those are calls for service where officers were involved in the crisis response initially. The crisis response team got there and were able to clear those officers off of that call and handle that. Average length of call, as you can see, is one hour and 17 minutes. So, that's time saved from our regular patrol officers that can further serve our communities and let the crisis response team handle their areas of expertise. Couple kind of accomplishments throughout the year. We worked with the hospital on a detain order. What we were finding was a lot of individuals, when we would get them up to the hospital, they weren't being screened properly, and they would just be released back out in our community. And so, that was kind of defeating the entire purpose of the crisis response team, to get them screened and get them the help that they need. So, we're able to work with them. You can see the statute up there, and it kind of puts the onus on the hospital now to make sure that those individuals are screened appropriately. The CRT Crisis Response Team Awareness calls now come into our department either on 911 or into our admin line, and it's individuals that have had contact or heard about the team, and they don't request an officer. They say, "Can you send your crisis response team out?" Or, "Can you send Officer Nobbs out?" And they know him particularly by name. And so, they're seeking us because they know that they're going to get the help and assistance that they need. You can see the patrol crisis team decrease, and actually, on those particular calls, they're showing two hours and 25 minutes savings there. And then, you can see the number of calls that were covered. Crisis response team covered about 18% of the mental health calls in our community. So, the program has been overwhelmingly successful despite challenges that we might have. When we initiated the program on April 1st, we had assistance from Horizons, and they had a mental health person assigned to that particular team. That lasted for a few months, and then we lost that particular individual, and they have not been able to fill that position throughout the rest of the year for the last several months. We do have a member of the team from MIR, who's part, and that's the substance abuse piece of that particular team. And then, we also have been reaching out to other people in our community to provide assistance who want to be a part of this team. I don't know if you guys are aware, but Rebecca Sandoval, she's a Hutch native. She runs a private practice here in town. She does all of the therapy for Avenue A School, so she's contracted with them. And so, she actually reached out to us and wanted to be part of our crisis response team. And so, we brought her on board, and she's responding with our team to crises in the field and assisting us in that nature. And so, I think that's just a real amazing partnership, and we're getting the word out that the service is available in the community. So, I had told the mayor that I'd come and report on the progress of that particular team. Thank you for the funding for that. I think that it's shown dramatic impact in our community, and I'd stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Chief, I think your team has done an outstanding job, and it's, we've learned a lot from the tragedy just a county over and how important it is to address those with mental health issues in a different way. So, hopefully preventing anything like that from ever happening in Hutchinson. Do you, we're still in the process, or Horizons is still in the process of hiring for that full-time social worker?
Yeah, we're obviously still in communication with them. They're attempting to hire for that particular position. They're having hiring issues like anybody else, especially at the therapist level, which is what we prefer to have in that particular team to help us diagnose. And so, but they're still... And so, but they're still actively trying to fill that position.
Okay. And then one other question I had is on the reduced load of the kind of heavy users, the 10 that went down to five or six. What happened to the other half of those? Did they, are they fully functioning? Did you follow up with them or no?
Yeah, and so we, what we do is, is that we initially, when they're in the program, we're following up with them on a daily basis. And then, once they start to become stabilized, then we follow up with them on a weekly basis. And then it becomes a monthly basis. And then we basically eliminate them off of that list. But then we follow up with them. And the period that we've set is six months. So we follow up with them at least on a monthly basis for six months. And then if they're stabilized for a period of six months, then we just keep them in a cold folder. So, and then, because we think that they've been stabilized long enough to hopefully not resort back to crisis. So we have a, you know, kind of a diminishing service that we provide to them till we're sure that they're stabilized.
Oh, that's great. Well, I really appreciate all the data you put together in this presentation and the work you're doing on this end because it's been needed for a long time. So thank you for your efforts and for all the team is doing.
Yeah, and thank you, Madam Mayor. And the last thing I wanted to mention was we couldn't do this without our community partners. You know, with Stepping Up and everybody that's involved there, you know, with our, all the partners that kind of come together with our mental health services, our court system, our judges, and everybody that's involved. It's really, truly a partnership. And if there weren't services for us to connect these individuals with, we wouldn't be successful. So it's really a community effort.
Yeah, well said. Thank you, Chief. Next item, please.
Item five, the oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the part of the meeting where we allow comment from the public on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to address the council, please come to the podium, state your name and zip code, and keep your comments to five minutes.
Morning, Mayor, council members. Greg DeGarmo, 67501. I'm the president, FCIU Local 513, representing the City of Hutchinson employees. I wanted to get back with you since our last meeting and kind of give you an update where we're at with our situation we have with negotiations. We received another proposal last Wednesday. It really had no change, just additional clarifying language. Our business agent spoke with Mr. Sanders on Thursday. He then got with me and my officers on Friday. And then he responded again, our business agent responded again yesterday. We've not had time to conduct a vote. We send out notices in the mail and then usually conduct a vote like at Public Works. I once read that one definition of insanity was doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. We're trying to get this cleared up and see if we can't figure out what's going on and, you know, come to a situation that will work good for both sides. One thing I did want to mention that, like, with police and fire schedules are very different than those employees that I represent. They have people on duty 24 hours a day to answer whatever comes up. My employees, they work an eight-hour shift and are off 16, but they're still available. They have two days off, but they're also still available. So it, the situation varies a little bit with my crew. But I did want to update you where we're at. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any.
Okay. Any questions from the audience or from the council?
So what you're saying is, so I know that when we spoke last time, we clarified that we'd come with a compromise that you would get that extra two hours or that overtime if it was an emergency situation? Are you saying that language was not put into the, what was sent to you on Wednesday?
Yeah, nothing was really changed.
I guess I just want to clarify, like, nothing was changed?
There was some additional language, clarifying language, but the original language was not changed. They added some additional language to what the original proposal was.
Caller, Jeff, is this something that we should consider discussing in executive session? Or do you want to comment on the direction given by the council and the changes that came out of that?
I think it's ripe for discussion in executive.
Okay.
It's actually on the agenda for executive session.
Okay. Well, Greg, I appreciate you coming here this morning and letting us know how you and your members feel. You said a vote has not yet been conducted.
We haven't had time to conduct it since we were just discussing it Thursday, Friday, and that's just yesterday. But we can still get notice out and conduct a vote from the membership.
Okay, well, what we'll do is convene an executive session and try to come up with some language that might work for both parties and get back with you after that.
Sounds great.
Okay. Thank you so much again for coming. Are there others who would like to address the council on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, please call the next item.
Item six, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or a discussion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Cervelo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven, eight, consider a request for extension of time on the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ryan Beal, Director of Planning and Development. Coming before you this morning to request an extension of time on the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program. Just a quick history, the city received this grant. It was awarded back in February of 2020. By the time all the paperwork and everything was signed, the contract went into effect in March of 2020. It is a two-year grant. No surprise with supply chain issues as well as the ongoing pandemic. We have had some difficulty in getting homes completed as quickly as we would have liked. We have made quite a bit of progress, though. So last year, we did get three homes that were completed. There are five more that are under construction now, which would leave us with approximately two homes that would need to be done to spend down the rest of the grant. There has been one home that has been applied for, and there's been conversations of the second home as well. So in our conversations with SCAD as well as the Department of Commerce, we have approached them and talked to them about getting a three-month extension so that would then give us until middle of June of 2022 to complete the grant. We believe we will be able to complete the grant in this amount of time. As I said, we've had conversations with the Department of Commerce on this. We are certainly not the only community that's facing this. Most of the grantees that were in that 2020 cohort have, are facing very similar issues. One of the main issues that we ran into last year, as I alluded to, was supply chain issues. One of the big things was doors and windows. Almost every single one of these homes is getting their windows replaced, and you're looking at a 45 to 60-day lead time on windows, if you're lucky. So that has really slowed down a majority of it. The final reason that we're requesting this is because of the demographics in that neighborhood. That neighborhood does tend to skew a little bit older. Those are people that tend to be a little bit more susceptible to complications from COVID. And that has caused a little bit of some reticence from the residents in terms of allowing people into the home, the contractors into the home to do the work and things like that. Like I said, we think we're past those issues, and we're confident that we'll be able to finish out this grant in June of this year and then set ourselves up nicely to apply for another grant probably in next year. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but it's a pretty simple request. But we do need approval from the council in order for us to submit it to the state.
Any questions? Ryan, I did have a question about the request for extension. Did the Department of Commerce indicate that this has happened in other communities? And, okay, so you don't think it impairs our ability to get?
No, no, it's very, it's very common. I spoke with Kayla Savage, who is over the housing portion of the Department of Commerce. And we spoke at length last year about this, and she said that wouldn't be a problem, and it would not impact our future ability to get other grants.
Great, great. I did have a few questions on the letter. We might want to clean up the language on the letter. It's a little confusing before I sign it, but we can address that. Is there a motion on this item?
I would move to approve the time extension for the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program and authorize the mayor to sign the associated documents.
Second, motion and a second. Is there further discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass? Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Cervelo.
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven, eight, consider a ready seat options.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. This is just more coming back from our meeting with the Southwest Brick Town area. I know there's representatives here. There was a pretty good discussion, I believe. There was about 30 people there and three council members at that meeting. So going forward, what I kind of want to stress or go forward, engineering is looking for a direction to move forward on this. As you know, Woody Seat's not getting any better every day, but the sooner we get started, the sooner we can get things moving to clean that corridor up. Also, we still recommend the option number three, which was the single-lane roundabout in that area just for the various items such as improved safety, some reduced long-term maintenance with respect to that since two bridges would be removed. I know there's pros and cons for all the options that were suggested. And many of you are fairly well versed in those at this point. So I did, it did come up yesterday that there was a request for some Spanish options for that neighborhood, for some of the materials. It's my understanding that the YouTube video, there is the option to have Spanish subtitles for that. I haven't tried that out, but I was notified that just as we were walking in this morning. Anyway, I know there's other representatives here that want to discuss this. So you guys have any questions? Or you can move forward if anybody else has questions going forward.
City manager, did you want to address the bilingual issue?
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. And I think staff was going to take a stab at getting some of those documents and that original slideshow converted so that it would be bilingual. So we look forward to having that done shortly. Also, I know there's the issue of the railroad and a lot of reliance on this. One of the proposals would relate to the railroad and their authority. We have not heard back from them. We have reached out to them. And I don't know that that is an avenue that we could expect a prompt response on as far as formal authority. So I would just, I guess I would caution the group to not expect a very prompt response with regard to the railroad on that particular matter.
Okay, thank you.
I would guess they would want a more formal submittal and discussions on that as we move forward, on that option number five, which would be just to remove the Woody Seat Freeway. So they have a better idea, not just a, here's what we think we might do, those types of things.
Okay, thank you. Are there members of the audience who would like to address the council on this issue?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cecilia Pena from Southwest Brick Town. First of all, I'd like to say thank you again for attending our meeting. There was, like he said, a very good discussion going on. Since then, we have formed a committee. We got together and we did some talking and brainstorming. And we are aware that you have looked into option three very intently and thoroughly and realized that the reason why there's more information for that option is because of the grant that you had applied for prior. We are here today to ask for an extension. And I appointed a member of our committee to explain why. We just hope that you're open-minded and listen and be the true right representatives for our community to give us the ability to come onboard, voice our opinions, and for you to really take to heart what we're saying and understand our part. I'd like to turn it over to Natasha Iverson to be our spokesperson.
My name is Natasha Russell Iverson, 67501. So the concerns that, as I understand them, that have come forward from my attendance at Southwest Brick Town meetings and this task force kind of boil down somewhat simply, but raise, the project itself raises enough questions for me that I felt like I needed to look for some answers. And because I work at the library, I have the ability to, like, to know where to go to look for some of the answers that I'm hoping to find. And one of those avenues is through old newspapers. I'm going to try to make this simple, but it's not simple because this city has been down this road before, specifically with this project. And one of the things that I found really interesting was that for all the studies that have been done on the options that have been presented, the one option that I was hearing a lot of response to, positive response to from residents of the south part of town was the one option that had not been devoted to much study. But what I found in the old newspapers amounts to a study. And it's a, it is a study in the success of how to create a slum. And that word literally was used in the newspaper article that I am referring to. That bridge was built, they called it the Jefferson Street Bridge. And when it was built, it led out onto what literally was a dirt road. It wasn't even paved. And when the project came about to put up the viaduct, which is what it was called before, well, let me try to go in order. It was met with approval by the city, what was then called commission, city council. And the residents, the minority, as it was referred to, put forward a petition that ended up resulting in having to go up for a vote before the city. One of those convoluted votes where if you voted no, it meant yes. And if you voted yes, it meant no. So if you kind of follow me, like, there's a proposal that's accepted, the petition, the anti-petition is presented, then it has to go to a vote. And if you vote no, it means that you're saying, yes, you want the project. And if you, you get what I'm saying. So all this convoluted stuff happened around 1960, a little before we get Woody Seat being voted into the city commission a year or so later. being voted into the city commission a year or so later, and by, like, sixty-one, I think he's seated, you know, on the commission, and within a year, it's being referred to as the Woody Seat Freeway. And so that's why we call it the Woody Seat, like, that's a person. He was a very successful business person. And one of the interesting things was that there was a lot of positive relationships between Hutchinson and South Hutchinson. From what I could tell from the newspapers, they were positive business types of relationships. I think Frank Hart figures large in that, because now it's not the Jefferson Street Bridge, or whatever, I'm pretty sure it's called the Frank Hart Bridge. I don't have as much information about that. All I'm trying to say is that it looks to me, and which is the reason that I stand in solidarity with the Southwest Bricktown group, the south side of Hutchinson, the minority, because we are minorities, and we're called minorities for a reason. It's because we represent a minority of the population. One of the things that I found in here, as it was being promoted to vote for the Woody Seat project with all the bridges to go forward, was very degrading of the minorities' positions, making fun, literally making fun of them. It's kind of disgusting to read and to realize that it is live and present kinds of positions that people do take, even to this day. So yes, we need Spanish translation of materials, yes, we need to make sure that people are informed, but we also need to make sure that we have a clear vision and understanding of what our city actually wants. Do we want to maintain what we created as a slum for the city of Hutchinson? There are a lot of if-then's in this question. I'm not, let me look at my notes and make sure that I'm covering, I feel like there are possible solutions as far as the if-then's to some of the, all the pros and cons involved as far as the railroad tracks and the police station and the EMS, and there are ideas that could be solutions, and that could be viable solutions to those kinds of details. But we definitely are asking for more time to study, to actually study, the fifth option, and to actually put your minds to what you really want for the city and its residents, and what we actually have. Like, we just got through having the Black History Month proclamation, and references to the vitality that was represented by the south part of town by minorities, blacks and Hispanics, I might add. Quite as it's kept, we even had a Chinese laundry back in the day, just saying. Like, we have minorities in this town that are represented, but that are unacknowledged and shunted to the wayside in ways that should not be. And in fact, what should be being done is an active acknowledgement. I also represent a group called Hutch and Harmony. We are promoting some ideas around historic development, like historic preservation projects. That, I mean, there are three that are in my mind right now, that there's funding for things like that. And when I say historic preservation, those are the kinds of things that could actually draw people to this town if we cared. And I think we should care. I think that's all I have. I would love to answer questions if anybody wanted more of the historical information or whatever, other kinds of things. I hope I covered everything that we talked about.
Sorry it took so long. Again, we want to say thank you for everything you've done in coming to our meeting last week. Again, we're just asking, we're just asking for more time. We invested our time, our resources, we've talked to some people, including the train people. We've had some people come out and give some ideas on that. We're taking this seriously. And again, we want you to take that to heart and realize that we're here being a part of our community. We want to take pride in what we have, we want to reinvest, that old saying that in history, what goes around comes around. We want to reinvest that will, we want to come back around, we want to reinvest and see our downtown, south downtown, be bright and vibrant, just like we have on further north. So please take that into consideration and realize we just need more information. We want more information on option five, just as much as you've given on option three. Thank you.
I actually wanted to talk about that for a second. So I know that this has been an ongoing discussion with the grants. I know that Garza and I were up here several times within the last two years, asking about other options. And so in my dismay, when we go to get the report on the Woody Seat, all of a sudden, there's five options. Why haven't we not been discussing these five options earlier? Because we also talked about a year prior of having a contingency on the project if we did not get the grant and setting that in the motion. Now, I asked the engineering about options, and you know what they did? They only fed the council the information they wanted for the result that they wanted.
I don't believe that to be true.
No, I'm gonna say it's be true, because I will go back and get the recording of me asking the engineering department of similarities to options two, and it's recorded, and being told it was impossible, and that this needs to be done, because you can't have this, or you can't have that. They said the angle of it coming down was impossible to come to a stop sign, it had to be a roundabout. And I think everybody in this room remembers those discussions, when me and Garza brought this up and were asking for alternative options to the grants, and discussing contingency plans had we not got the grants, and we're told the only options are either to rebuild it or put in the roundabout. And putting in the roundabout obviously is way better than rebuilding it because of the cost of money, that was what was being told. So I am very frustrated that the city staff, for the last year and a half, has only fed the information they wanted for the results that they wanted. And now I know how public feels sometimes when they're doing projects in certain areas of the city, and they're not given all the information, because I want to know why did these options come out of nowhere when me and Steve Garza have been asking for them for a year and a half.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you very much. That's what we're talking about. The word that Natasha and our committee tossed around is transparency, right? That's all we're asking for, be transparent. You've given the option three, all the investigating and everything, all the history, all the tracking and everything, then threw up, like Sarah said, these other options, you have options one through four, and then all of a sudden, option five, and then it's dropped off, there's nothing there. All we're asking is for more time, more information, more discussion. I agree, the bridge is in dire need, it needs to be fixed. We're putting Band-Aids on it right now to make it safe, I'm happy for that. But until we have all the options on the table, transparent, for everybody to see, everybody to make a choice, is all we're asking, transparency.
Thank you, Sarah. We have another one wants to speak.
Calvin Wright, six, seven, five, oh, two, I guess I'm supposed to give my zip code. I had an opportunity to meet with, as president of NAACP, some of the citizens of Hutchinson brought over some details and just wanted to express their concern, and asked for another opinion on how it's being presented. And so at a thirty thousand foot level, I kind of observed what you just said, Sarah. In the document that presents the five options, clearly it leans heavily to say, here's the engineering option number three. In year one and two, they clearly presented the twenty-year proposal of savings, but at option three through, three through five, it didn't mention those savings. It says it'll save on accidents, but there's no numbers of accidents or intensity of accidents that are being represented. When the document represents the cost of the project, if you look at year one through five, and you look at, if you look at options one through five, it presents clearly twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five, that the costs are essentially the same. But on option five, it also added years twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. It did not add the others on the other four. And so I believe in my discussion with the team that they needed more time to understand, why are we presenting twenty-year savings on some options, one and two, but not on the remaining options? Why do we talk about our costs in year, on option five, but not on option one through four? And it just appears that the data that's missing is to draw a specific conclusion. And option three is presented as a specific conclusion without outweighing the other four options. It's just a page with a picture of the engineering option. And so again, just out of thirty thousand foot view and a, and a, it doesn't appear that there's enough information for the citizens to agree to option three. Option five clearly eliminates the street that you don't have to remove snow from, it creates green space which absorbs groundwater. It just does a lot of things that are, you know, I'm from a much bigger city, and one of the things they want is green space, so you can prevent flooding and alleviates your, you're having to handle a little bit rain runoff. Well, you got green space if you go with option five. And so there's just some things in option five that tend, they're just, I would say, one, two, four, and five didn't provide enough information. You know, so, and it was unbalanced.
Calvin, you're meaning, Calvin? You're meaning the, taking the street away, you're talking about the bridges, taken.
The bridges, so the bridge has a covering, I don't know, asphalt, concrete, something. And in that covering, well, we know that collects water, right? And what I see in five, and that water has to go somewhere, right? And I don't know if it runs off the green space, or if it runs into the sewer. But if it runs into the sewer, that's an added burden on the city. And so even that infrastructure could possibly be alleviated. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering, I just wanted to answer a couple of the questions. This whole process started with a TEEP study, it was really based on safety at Avenue A and Woody Seat at the time.
Could you explain TEEP?
Yeah, it's a transportation alternatives assistance program, which KDOT provides. We had noticed that there was accidents at that location that potentially could be prevented, and so we submitted an application to KDOT at the time, and then they accepted the study, and that's how this whole process actually started back in two thousand sixteen. Then it initially applied to Avenue A and Adam Street, but they did not find any options that would be, that they could do to improve safety with respect to that. Then it got expanded, or the second study included more the options with respect to Woody Seat and that corridor. So, and so it really didn't evaluate other, it only evaluates one location, it doesn't evaluate the whole, the whole of the project at this point, which we knew needed some work going forward too, as we went with this, so. That's how that got started, and they, the recommended option was the option number three, and.
I have a question about option number three. So originally, option number three has a double roundabout, where there's a roundabout also, but in the presentation on the last, it kind of cuts off at that picture. Is the roundabout option going to a stoplight, or is it still the double roundabouts? Because you're not showing that.
It would be the one, just the one single roundabout at this time, going to the stop sign with traffic signal improvements. So there should be some coordination, so the stacking and those types of issues wouldn't be as prevalent.
Okay, because I remember asking you this question, I said, I'm not really fond of two roundabouts. And I said, is there any way where we can keep the lights and do the timing and only have one roundabout? And you said, no, we have to have both roundabouts, because we can't have traffic backing into the other roundabout. And I don't know if anybody else.
And I don't remember that discussion, I know that I remember the questions, I don't remember my answer at the time.
So now, once again, I have, I'm looking at this, and I'm going, well, now I have, why is there only one roundabout? I was told, so I feel that the questions that I have probed you on, I feel like I've been lied to, or only given the information that would result in me agreeing with the solution that the city wants, and it's very frustrating.
Jeff, can you speak to the cost and time commitment of doing a more thorough study for option five?
There would be, yeah, there is a cost and time commitment to that. It would, most likely, we'd go out for proposals and get those back, and then they would have to study some of the traffic in the area, encompassing more than just a single area, or a single street and those types of things, and how it interacts with existing at-grade crossings. I know railroads typically try to get rid of at-grade crossings, because they're not as safe going forward, so there'd have to be some attention to that, as well as the corridors that go into the city, like, as we come to Main Street and those types of things, what things would cause problems, potentially Tyson, that location of that plant facility, with respect to what improvements may or may not need to be happening at those points, at that location, and others, improvements to Monroe Street perhaps, or perhaps Adam Street also. So there's about ten thousand cars per day that do go over Woody Seat. I know we've, for a couple of weeks, we've had them going through those areas now, but long-term, safety is one of the things we're trying to look at throughout this, aside from needing to do work on Woody Seat and maintain that, or upgrade it to a point where it's back to where it's a viable piece of infrastructure for the community.
I do have another, I wanted to add to that. So the Woody Seat comes off onto, you go over down A to Monroe, and you go over onto Adams, right? So it's not like it's a freeway that connects to another freeway, or goes completely through the town, so I'm not understanding why it's such a big deal about ten thousand cars being on Adam and Monroe, when that's where the ten thousand cars either get in or exit is to Adam or Monroe, so you just make.
They do, but they don't.
So they're already going into more of the.
They don't have to cross the railroad at those locations, at least they have an option to go over the railroads and don't have to find their way through the neighborhoods.
But I think the traffic has already traveled on those roads.
Yeah, and I don't have all the traffic counts on those at this point, but.
So Jeff, if we were to study, again, option five, are we looking at a one-year study?
I would say to actually be adequate and get the information that we would need, I believe that would be the responsible thing to do, to have some good study and some good input to.
And do you know what the cost would be?
I have not investigated.
Fifty thousand, hundred thousand?
Have not investigated that at all, honestly.
Okay. Jeff, I have a question for you on, so let's say we, let's say we explore option five, and we take a year to do it. That puts us to beginning of twenty twenty-three. If we then wanted to use local fiscal recovery funds for part of the infrastructure costs, those have to be encumbered by twenty twenty-four? And the project completed by twenty twenty-six, I guess I'm wondering, would it even be feasible to use that particular revenue stream if we push the project back another year? Because I'm not sure how long the phasing will take of the actual bridge reconstruction or demolition.
I think that we could encumber, and the reason I'm hesitant in jumping right up is, I thought that there had been some changes in that that even relaxed requirements even more, not so much on how the money is utilized, but some of the commitment dates, I need to verify that. But I think it might even be better than what we initially anticipated. My experience at other cities is that a study that. Um, my experience at other cities is that a study that, it, it really, don't quote me on this, because it definitely ranges. Uh, but this could easily be a fifty to seventy, eighty thousand dollar study, pretty simply.
I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I'm not opposed to doing a deeper study on the option that the public deems, you know, more, and they're more interested in. I am a little concerned that should we do the study, the same result, um, if we get the same result, are, are there going to be calls for, you know, multiple studies, other? At, at some point, we, we do need to exercise some leadership and, and do something about this bridge.
Well, the whole corridor needs some work to keep for maintenance going forward.
Yeah.
Avenue B Bridge is one that is of concern and um, that'll have to be monitored. Hopefully it can remain open, but potentially there's a chance at some point that that, in the next few years that we have to shut that down.
I would recommend also if we, if it's the council's intent to do a further study on five, that we greatly reduce our um, bonding this year anyway, because we're probably going to. I, I mean, we, we still need to, I would think, factor in what we were going to bond for this year. I, I don't, I'm not sure how everyone else feels about that, but reducing our CIP program for this year in anticipation of a much greater bond next year.
First of all, number one, you are showing leadership by doing this. We're showing leadership to the, that we need to study this. Number five wasn't uh, assumed even studied at all that you say.
Was not.
Okay, so we are.
It was more briefly as we were preparing information.
Correct.
Just, just so that there was something that had mentioned that, at least to start out with and start discussion.
Right. The way I look at this is I look at this, we only have one shot at this. If it takes more studies, it takes more studies. There's only one shot at this, so either putting that bridge back to where it was, which I am not for. We got one shot to do this and we are showing leadership that we go on and do a study. So I would say, I don't know if you're ready for that, I would say we give more time. I was out there during the weekend, I walked all weekend, talking to different neighbors, talking to a lot of people, going to a lot of meetings in the neighborhoods. And all of them, some of them were for to put it back, but I explained to them and we had talks and they're all for number five. Uh, they want to move forward. They want to move, take the south end to a better place than we had before. And if it takes, I was, I went on Saturday, I went over to Avenue F Street and I sat there and watched the traffic. There's no more traffic than usual comes off that and we had it closed. So if we close it and we can't have, maintain the bridge right now, whatever it takes, we have one shot to do this, to do this right. And if it takes a study to do it right, then it takes a study. And as far as the money's concerned, trust me what I'm going to say, we spend a whole bunch of money in the north end of town. It's about time we spend a little money on the south end of town. That's the way I look at it. There's north end gets a lot of potential up there, they get new streets, they get new pavement, they get everything. Their parks get money. It's about time we spend some money on the south end of town and do it right the first time.
And I'm going to agree with him on that. We've spent study sessions on, we, what, with thirty thousand to have engineers look at that park up in the north side of town and what we're going to do with the green space and the stickers. We've spent study session money on parks and trails. We've spent study session money. And these normally are between thirty and fifty thousand dollars that we've spent on every one of these other study sessions. Because I hear the gripe from people like, why, why are we spending all this money on study sessions? You know, why don't, can't we just have the park departments put a park in? Or, you know, why do we have to pay somebody to study the, the demographics of, of the way the park flows and, and have, you know, so we have a lot of study sessions. We can't say that we haven't spent tons of money on study sessions. So I don't understand why we can't spend money on something that's going to make such a huge impact in this community on a study session when we clearly have spent thirty and fifty and eighty thousand dollars just recently on a study session of our internal workings of the city. So I personally think that, you know, option five isn't a bad option because we're completely eliminating the bridges. We're completely eliminating the costs of maintaining that future infrastructure. And um, and what does that look like? So, I think we're saying we, we do want to spend money on a study of five. Isn't that kind of what, where we were going?
Well, I think there's some factors we're missing here though.
I, I have a lot of thoughts and you guys haven't spoke yet.
Okay.
Most of you that know me know that I, I like to make decisions and get them done, but I think it's a very reasonable ask to actually study this. And, and not to drag it on, I, 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 again, my personality is to get stuff done. I think we owe it to ourselves. I, I hope that somebody twenty years from now goes, you know, they worked hard on that and they made the right decision. I think there's an opportunity here to push more business south, I think. And, and, you know, I don't know what Jeff, what the study might indicate. It may not work. I've, I've talked to Chief Hooper about some of this and it may never work, but I think we owe it to ourselves to know. Sarah, I agree with everything you've said. I mean, we, we just have to know for ourselves. I think it is, it will force us to upgrade the streets down in the south part of town. I know that whatever we do, if it's option three or option five in the end, it's going to improve the area. I think that we all can agree on that. I, I just, I think we really need to think about this before we just leave it quasi like it is. I'm not for rebuilding it either, Steve. I, I, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, and the highway doesn't, there, there is no ninety-six highway that connects to another highway now over on Fourth Street. It, it's a done deal. They, west of town, the ninety-six bypass goes around and exits on West Fourth, way out by the river. So, again, that's not my personality to drag things out and to spend money for that example, for, for example. I don't like that either, but I think we spend enough money doing other things, other things. We certainly can.
Can I interject one thing?
Sure.
Um, I also don't want a study that's being done that ultimately is going to drag it on because the lens that the city is looking through is option three lens, just doing an option five study through the lens of we still want option three. Does that make sense? So that their ultimate goal is almost to disprove, you know, or like we, and so I think that as a council, we almost need to instruct, we want option five today and do whatever it needs to be done to get that done so that there's more of a commitment to getting it done versus a study just to prove us wrong.
Well, Sarah, I might say that we should, a, a better direction may be to provide an option that, that doesn't close down B, because I think that's the will of southwest Bricktown. I, I wouldn't want us to dictate a study that is found to be infeasible or um, you know, just unviable in some other manner, because that's really hamstringing the staff. If, if the main goal is to not shut down B, maybe the direction needs to be to, to find an option to not shut down B.
Jade, I think that, that I disagree with you a little bit there. I think that if we pick the best option for the city long-term, I think that, that, that there are some folks that don't want V Street shut down, but I think they would be okay with it if that, if everything was exhausted. And, you know, this is what we should do.
So you think option three would be tenable if the end result is that it's best?
Possibly, and, and I don't think that, that the engineering staff necessarily has an agenda. I mean, they, they've studied this for five years now, for, the state has helped them study this. I've talked to them numerous times, probably for two hours. And they're very careful about giving their opinion. That's not their job. Their job is to.
Present information.
Say, this is the information we have. And, you know, I don't, I don't remember if they were asked for these other options. I, I know that option five just kind of came out of nowhere and so.
Options one and two?
Yeah, I, I don't know where the, I've never seen those, but.
John, I know you had some thoughts that you have been very patient and.
Well, I think it's important, for, for the people I talk to in my area, it's really fifty-fifty on do an option five, do an option three. It's fifty-fifty on get a decision made now versus study option five more. I think it's important for us to keep in mind, um, just for fact related, the study doesn't cost fifty thousand bucks. Delaying the project one more year costs more like half a million dollars, because it does get cheaper to build stuff. And if that's, we're looking at a half-century project. I mean, this is going to be an investment that's going to affect the city for half-century. That's going to seem like a dime in the bucket ten years down the road. But it's important to remember that's a fact that we have to think about. It's not just a fifty thousand dollar study. The community of southwest Bricktown, especially for me, since I've moved back, has shown what a community really is. I mean, it's really, that's a community. I don't think we should be making decisions that um, hinder the feel of the community in southwest Bricktown. But I, I, I came to this city council meeting thinking we're going to make a decision today. I didn't, all right? The, the traffic changes going to option five don't really, I don't see that as being much of an issue. I think most people will either find a different way around. I do have a number of people that I've talked to that either work in the area or have businesses in the area that are concerned about the railroad. If there is a way to vet the railroad before investing into a study, I would like to see that done, because that's really the bottleneck. If the railroads are saying, no way, we're not going to be on board, we need to take that into account before we make an investment in a study. But we owe it to the southwest Brickdown community to act, well, to everybody, because it's a big cost savings too in the long run, to see if that's even an option. But we also need to keep in mind, we could be held hostage by the railroad down the road too. Ten years from now, if the railroad's, we got a lot of accidents, we have a lot of traffic issues, maintenance issues, we're closing down this, we need to be willing to understand that risk if we're going to make that decision. So, I mean, it's, it's, no one, we're not going to make everybody happy on this deal.
No, but I, I, I do think Sarah brought up a good point that um, you know, we've, we've kind of been, not narrow-mindedly, but kind of been focused in on the option three because it's what transportation experts and engineers have deemed the most safe and the most um, cost savings over the long term. Are there other thoughts from the engineering department before we try to gain consensus from the council on this item?
Mary, that's very true what you just said and I'm going to jump in real quick. The, the history of option three is pretty much in the lens of um, experts telling us how to design to get the money. And that's a pretty common practice for all cities. You design to get the grant dollars because it makes most sense. It's sustainable, it conforms to new design, all the good stuff, the key words that you'd want to hear. And so it's not really created in a vacuum of staff, evil staff nefariously sitting in cubicles coming up with a strategic plan to screw the community. It's really more about how do we get these grant dollars and what's the most responsible design? Uh, of course, that's, that comes with options too, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing out that, um, you know, staff is just doing their job here. Um, and I, I hope in the future we can, we can avoid degrading them in any fashion for carrying out the work that we've told them to do. So I appreciate the efforts of the engineering team and, and all the work you've put into this. I'm hearing consensus on delaying this decision until we can get a more formal study of option five or a similar design that maybe avoids closing B. Is, is that the case?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm choking on a cracker bit.
It doesn't sound like we could get any kind of feedback from the railroad any. Is there three railways that operate in that area, do we know?
Yes.
I see staff nodding their heads affirmatively.
So we'd have to get permission from three different railroads or at least get? It would be nice if before our next meeting, we had some sort of, if possible, some sort of memorandum of understanding or something from the railroads on what we're wanting to do before we order a study. And that, that's just a thought.
I don't know, but we're getting consensus on anything that actually tells us anything at that.
Cause they're in charge of us.
Well, that's their, that's their corridor and it's, it's, it's for them to transport goods and things across the country. So it's, we're a small fish in that whole chain.
So I guess my question is even if after, if we do a true feasibility study and we need to draw up a plan and present it to the railroad.
Yeah, and that, I, that of course would be included in this. There's these sit downs and those types of things, so.
I mean, I, I've been over there and counted, there's, I think, five or six ways, you know, if the traffic comes over Frank Hart Crossing or if it ends at F Street. I mean, there's obviously going to be a preferred way. Hopefully it would be down Main Street or Adams. But it, it seems to me like, I, I, I mean, I, I'm just having trouble wrapping my head around the whole railroad thing when there's all these, these crossings and they're, they're all, most of them have crossing arms and they're just going to say, no, you can't, we, we, we're not going to handle all this traffic. Is that, I, I mean.
Jeff, do you mind coming up to the podium? I'm sorry.
I, I've.
I don't, I don't know how they'll, they'll respond. I mean, they might have different options for us and that we haven't even thought about it.
Sure, and, and I understand we've had a lot of trouble with the Cow Creek expansion, the drainwater expansion. But it, it's finally, I think they've, they're agreeable, you know, after talking and talking and talking, they.
We're getting there.
Yep, we're getting there.
Well, Jeff, um, I think there is consensus. There's at least four of us who, who want to see a study on another option. A few notes, the stakeholders on South Main, those businesses are going to be very interested in traffic patterns that might impact truck deliveries. So we need to make sure they're part of the conversation. The other thing I want to be, um, make certain of is that any information going forward to southwest Bricktown, we, we do have translated. Is, I don't know if that's something you, you would work on or something Dave said hello?
Yeah, we would make that a priority going forward.
Okay, I appreciate that. And do you have any idea of a timeline for RFPs for this study or, or?
Well, we'll start working on it, so I'll know more as we get going, but I think we can get a RFP out reasonably fast in the next few weeks and then start that process moving forward.
Okay, well, I really appreciate your openness to that option. And I think this council wants to assure southwest Bricktown that this is going to be a serious effort to look at options that don't close B or look, look at that option five. Um, so I want you to trust us that we're going to really examine that option. But I also ask that you, you trust the results of that study then. And hopefully it's a feasible option.
Study, we, we actually had no preconceived notion of what, what that would even come out.
Yeah.
Honestly, I mean, we don't try to shade them one way or the other. It's more based on the data and information available at the time, so.
Yeah, yeah. The, the data doesn't take into account history and emotions and cultural.
And that's, we don't look at things.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Not, not necessarily.
If the, if the one thing this does is, is make the public to feel like we're more transparent, I want that to happen for if no other reason alone. I think I want to be transparent.
Yeah, for sure.
And again, for the reasons I said before, I would really like to know. I think there's so much potential upside. It may not work, I don't have any idea. But, you know, I'm a fan of Main Street and a fan. All I have, all I've heard for the last year is how we didn't take care of the south side of town. So, a- again, whatever we do is going to be an improvement. It may not be option five, but I think we owe it to ourselves to know for sure.
Yeah, well, I want to thank all the members of southwest Bricktown who took time out of your day and maybe even time off of work to attend this and several other sessions. And just for your civic engagement, it's, you've got higher levels of civic engagement than I would say any other area of the community and it does matter, it does make a difference. So um, thank you and thank you Natasha for always being a great historian and, and sharing, sharing those facts with us.
One other thing Jade, I'd like to see, is there any way that you find studies, I don't know if it's against the rules or nothing, that you, the studies that you find, go ahead and give it to the committee of southwest Bricktown instead of coming to a meeting and give them all, that way they can digest and see what's going on. What you know, they should know.
There most likely will be, likely will be some public engagement going through this process anyway. So, that would be kind of in the thick of things, so to speak, as we go, go through that study. So, so I, I would think we want to include.
Yes.
A piece of that in the scope anyway.
Yes.
Jeff, and we're going to be okay with that bridge, right? For another year? That bridge isn't going to like fall apart, is it?
Well, I can't.
No promises.
I'm not going to predict, predict that. But it'll be inspected again this next year. If we have to close it, we have to close it. I'm not, for safety's sake, I mean, that, our infrastructure and we take safety seriously. So, we want to do the things that we need to do to either close it if we have to or, so I don't know exactly what, I'm not going to predict the future on that one.
Okay. Well, thank you.
We just want, like I said, if, if we can be included on these conversations, we're committed.
Yep.
We're committed.
Clearly, yeah. Absolutely. Thank you Cecilia for, for your leadership. Okay, next item, please.
Item seven C, presentation by Reno County ARPA Task Force.
Hello. This is Jackson Swer, six seven five oh two. Before I get into my introductory remarks, do we have the video for Sean? And also, do we have Sean on the line? This is Dr. Sean Eddington from K-State.
Whenever you, whenever you, I, I'll give you the, it'll be, and he's, and he's on there? Okay, very good.
He will be on there about thirty seconds later.
Perfect.
Well, he's on.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, council and the audience. I want to make sure we had our technical issues worked out in advance, if possible. Oh, great. Thanks, Sean. Sean's about thirty seconds behind, so we'll have to keep that in mind once we get to there. Also, Sean, you're going to want to mute your audio out on your end because you're going to get some feedback there. There we go. Okay. So, my name's Jackson Swer. I'm a member of the Reno County ARPA Task Force, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. In May of 2021, representatives from organizations serving Reno County formed a group to work with city and county leaders to gain input from Reno County residents on how they would prioritize the seventeen-plus million dollars coming to our community from the American Rescue Plan COVID Relief Bill passed in March of 2021. In accordance with the inclusive equitable, equitable spirit of the ARPA guidelines and recognizing that it needed more voices to help guide the process, the task force expanded to eventually include sixteen residents representing various community organizations, governing bodies and groups. To further ensure an inclusive, high-quality process, the task force also partnered with K-State University's Lead Comm Associates to help craft a facilitated civic engagement experience. The resulting plan was simple: reach roughly one percent of Reno County population through ninety-minute facilitated discussions with groups of eight to twenty residents. The first meeting was held in August, and by the time of the final meeting on October twenty-first, the task force had heard from five hundred fifty-three residents at a total of forty-five meetings hosted all across the county. This was a process that speaks to the power of volunteering. From the people who attended the meetings, the residents who stepped forth to help convene those meetings, the team of facilitators who dedicated hours to listening to residents' concerns, and to the men and women who gave their time and insights to serve as members of the task force, this initiative would not have been possible without you. And I thank you on behalf of the whole task force for your service. I would also like to thank Dr. Sean Eddington and his team at K-State's Lead Comm Associates for their work in crafting the meeting process and in synthesizing the data collected from those meetings into the final report you're about to hear. Now, I would like to introduce Dr. Eddington, who will discuss the findings of the report. Go ahead and play the video.
Hey, everyone. My name is Dr. Sean Eddington. I'm an assistant professor of Communication Studies at Kansas State University.
Did he unmute?
And I'm an affiliate. A faculty member with the Leadership Communication doctoral program in this daily school of leadership. I'm going to be presenting the findings from a program that my, my team of doctoral students in the Leadership Communication Program and I designed, developed, and then the fantastic folks from the Reno County Task Force facilitated about how to use the ARP funds. So, to determine how to best allocate funding received through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, broad-based feedback was received from residents of Hutchinson and Reno County in Kansas. Meetings were hosted with nineteen facilitators and represented various communities and local institutions within both Hutchinson and Reno County. In total, forty-five sessions were conducted with five hundred and fifty-three residents. Session participants represented a diverse group of community members that roughly mirrored the demographic profile of the adult population in Hutchinson and Reno County. The five hundred and fifty-three sessions and their participants generated over eleven hundred ideas across the eight priority spending categories described by the ARP as prescribed by the legislation. In this presentation, I'll detail these ideas collected throughout the Hutchinson and Reno County community in further detail in a few moments. However, session participants generated most ideas and recommendations for ARP funding around seven key spending priorities. Following their participation, participants were invited to evaluate their experience. And of those five hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and thirteen individuals completed a post-session survey. And overwhelmingly, these individuals found that the session and their, their experience in the, in the process that we designed was a positive one for them, and they felt very engaged and excited about using their voices. And so, as I said, the participants had a broad reach within the community. This is a sample of some of the groups that were participating. We had Reno County pastor groups, the Prairieland Realtors, the Southwest Bricktown neighborhood, the Hutchinson NAACP, the Boys and Girls Club. And for a full list, you can look at the appendix of our report that showcases all of the, the groups that were participating in the forty-five different meetings. As I mentioned, participants identified over eleven hundred ideas across all eight funding categories. Encouragingly, all these funding areas generated a diverse set of solutions except for the category for replacing public sector revenue loss. Solutions for addressing the broader negative economic impact to the county generated the largest number of ideas, followed by solutions to support the public health response. In each session, the participants were given three votes for the ideas that they believed were most important. They could divide the votes in any combination across ARP funding areas, and the feedback was further coded based on topical themes. Four themes: childcare, workforce development, housing, and mental health, received more than fifty percent of all votes, suggesting that these ideas and strategies are among the highest priority for ARP funds. Three additional themes: local and small businesses, access to healthcare and recreation, each received more than five percent of all the votes. The remaining sixteen themes each received less than five percent of the votes. And examples of specific ideas that received the greatest amount of concurrence during a community conversation are described throughout the report, but I'll talk about them in the next several slides. As I said, solutions to childcare was a consistent theme across all of the resident groups, all forty-five meetings. One of the things that my team did is we took all of the, the written ideas and generated from the participants and created a word cloud. And as you can see on the slide, childcare was consistent and prominent as a funding priority across the forty-five meetings. Now, previously, I'd mentioned that these seven, that the sessions themselves generated seven spending priorities, and these represent the priority focus for the participants and address the most critical issues facing Hutchinson and Reno County from the pandemic. As I mentioned, expanding childcare offerings and access was the key priority that individuals wanted funded. So, in these, with this, what they meant, participants focused on providing incentives to establish more childcare facilities. This can be through local businesses, private centers, or community-based initiatives, as well as supplementing salaries to attract workers in order to handle the gap in demand, and providing financial incentives to businesses or individual residents that help cover the expenses of these types of programs. The second most pressing issue facing the county was strengthening workforce development programs. So, here, participants recognized the need for creative programs that would educate, train, and attract and retain talented individuals into the community. And this included a strong focus on job training programs for a full array of age groups, from school co-op apprenticeships to scholarship and loan repayment in order to attract young workers, to job training programs for displaced workers. The third funding priority was developing more affordable housing. So, most ideas in this area centered on economic investments or incentives to develop affordable housing and/or rehab-targeted neighborhoods. The fourth, expanding mental health resources. So, participants' ideas centered on solutions that would provide the necessary funds to expand the county's existing programs or provide counseling classes to help broader population identify and address issues before they manifest into deeper problems. The fifth funding priority was supporting local and small businesses. So, participants focused on the significant impact of COVID closures on local businesses, especially those connected to travel and tourism. To address these issues, participants discussed grants, incentives, and ideas for attracting visitors to the community. Our sixth funding category, expanding access to healthcare. Here, participants brainstormed expanding healthcare locations and mobile services coverage throughout the county. And there was also a strong appeal for providing increased pay for frontline healthcare workers. Finally, enhancing quality of life through access to recreational activities. Participants discussed opportunities that would enhance the quality of life by creating access to recreational activities such as the river and trail access, as well as even park development. Now, next, following each meeting, participants were invited to share their experiences in a post-session survey. And the richness of the responses and engagement with the process indicates a genuine concern and a connection with the community needs at large. It provides valuable insights into how the funding solutions are likely to appeal to potentially a broad cross-section of the Reno County population. As I mentioned, the participants themselves came from a variety of different community and local groups, but we also had a fairly diverse population that took place in, in the sessions from a demographic standpoint. Of those that answered the question, we had about fifty-seven percent of the participants that followed up with the feedback survey were women, forty-three percent were men. We had an age group of thirty-five to sixty-four, representing nearly seventy percent of the participants within thirty-five to forty, with thirty-five to forty-four-year-old age group being the largest group involved in these sessions. From an ethnic background, the data that we had mirrors the census data regarding the population of, of the county. Additionally, we asked participants their feelings about what, what it's like to live in Hutchinson and Reno County. And residents overwhelmingly expressed the importance of Hutchinson and Reno County as a home. It's a place where they could build families. It's a built place where they could build their lives, build connections within the community, and be a part of something bigger than themselves. However, they did note that there were some tensions that were certainly surfaced and highlighted because of the ongoing pandemic. The first being this notion of change and stability. So, this is represented via the need and recognition that we need to change to be more economically competitive and thriving as a community while not losing sight of those traditions that make Hutchinson and Reno County home. The second tension is this idea that challenges also present opportunities. The ideas here are that there are challenges that the pandemic shed light on and exposed, but these are also opportunities in order to grow the community, to, to reinvest in not only the people, but also the, the city infrastructure. To initiate conversations, residents were then asked to identify how COVID-19 impacted the community. The impact on businesses was identified specifically the lack of cash reserves, as well as uncertainty about what to do during the shutdown period. But they also discussed how the lack of in-person schooling created mental health concerns for children and, as well as technology pressure, particularly with access to computers and consistent internet broadband throughout the community. Finally, participants noted that there were significant strains on a variety of community resources. In particular, residents cited churches, medical resources, financial services, as well as businesses as most vulnerable during the peak period. Overall, though, participants were highly engaged in the process, noting that they were able to identify and talk about different issues while also having their voices heard. Participants were also really willing and excited to participate in another similar event. And we asked folks if they would do it again, and about eighty percent of them said that they would, which speaks to a positive experience as well as the perceptions, their perceptions of a strong engagement with the overall process. So, next, I'll briefly describe the summary of ideas generated by the funding categories. You can see this more fully in the report. I want to also note that there was no subcoding of the ARP categories, replacing public sector revenue loss, as well as broadband infrastructure. It wasn't necessary, the ideas didn't necessarily deviate too far from one another. And so, we were not presenting any summary pie charts for these ARP funding categories in the next couple of slides. So, regarding public, supporting public health, you see that the largest piece of this pie graph is the fact that people wanted to invest in mental health resources with thirty-six percent. You also see ideas surrounding access to healthcare, twenty-four percent, and then social services and mental health care, and healthcare workers at fourteen and thirteen percent. Regarding addressing negative economic impacts, you see workforce development, training, and education at thirty-three percent, local and small businesses at twenty-five percent, and childcare at nineteen percent of all the ideas. Regarding broadband infrastructure, overall, participants focused on developing broadband infrastructure and generated similar ideas across all forty-five of the meetings. For providing premium pay for essential workers, again, you see the focus, fifty-six percent of the ideas around this ARP category were about childcare, with twenty-three percent being about employment, employment and wages, and twenty-one percent being about education and training. Regarding water and sewer infrastructure, participants rallied fifty-seven percent of the ideas around overall infrastructure. And then, they talked specifically about issues of wastewater at fourteen percent, flooding at eighteen percent, and energy issues at eleven percent. Equity-focused issues, we saw the issues around housing as one of the most prominent in this space, as well as childcare and homeless services. So, one of the things that you'll see that, and that you might have picked up on as we've gone through these different pie charts, is the fact that childcare, as well as even the workforce development programs, were threaded throughout all of the different categories and were touching different parts of, of the community. Finally, we included an eighth category called Other Possibilities. These were for ideas that didn't necessarily fit within the seven prescribed ARP categories. But we also wanted participants to be able to voice their ideas about how these funds could be used with the knowledge that, you know, that we would collect them and they'd be, they would be part of the report. You see recreation as being twenty-three percent of the ideas here, workforce development, as well as even childcare, generating ideas as, as pressing funding So, finally, the process provided a forum to engage a large number of the county's residents. And they identified a variety of solutions to the current issues surfaced by COVID-19. To capitalize on this positive momentum, participants and the broader Reno County population should be made aware of the ongoing work inspired by this program. We argue that it will demonstrate concern and attentiveness to the citizen by community leadership. It'll also help showcase the steps taken to address these common problems. Ideally, this communication will also highlight the broad-scale nature of the process used in order to solicit ideas and illuminate the impact of these programs on individuals or groups in the community. And these activities should help in the implementation of the selected programs, as well as continue to maintain community involvement in other programs. So, with that, again, my name's Dr. Sean Eddington, and I couldn't have done this work without the help of my fantastic team at Kansas State, Dr. Susan Metzger, Jeff Johansson, Monica McFarlane, Sakshibati, and Jessica Kerr. With that, I'll turn it over to you all for questions and answers. I look forward to having a conversation with you. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Yeah, so first, I'm going to note that you all should have received the task force's recommendations. There's a one-pager in here, pointing, recognizing that childcare is the top priority that residents want to see resources allocated to. And we do want to make a, encourage both the county and the city to make a bold statement that Hutchinson and Reno County are family-friendly and committed to supporting and growing a thriving workforce both today and tomorrow by substantial, by committing substantially all or a significant portion of ARPA funds to address the local childcare system, partnering with the K-Ready Reno County Coalition to determine the most strategic, equitable, and sustainable investments for long-term impact. But you'll also see that we've identified some of the. But you'll also see that we've identified some of the key partners and some of the ongoing efforts that are going on in the other priority areas that were identified by residents. And so we would encourage you, moving forward, not just with these ARPA funds, but also otherwise, to put your emphasis in some of these areas as well. With that, I believe we have Dr. Eddington on the line. I'm available for any questions. And there are several other members of the task force here who are ready to be tagged in, should you ask anything that we would rather hear from them. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Do you have specific ideas on how to make childcare better, how to properly spend this money so it's fair and equitable? Also, housing is on my radar.
Okay, well, now you've actually asked two separate questions.
Yes.
So on housing, I believe we would encourage you to work closely with your local housing commission, including the local housing organizations, to identify the interventions that would be best there. Fortunately, we do have in the room today our recommended contact and representative from the K Ready Coalition. So Denise, if you'd like to go ahead and come up first. I believe she'll be much more qualified to answer your questions about childcare than I am.
Hello, Denise Gillan Burbank. So we have been gifted a grant that will allow us to do a childcare market study. We've identified a partner to work with. And the very first step that we have is in place is to diversify the players in both K Ready and our Child Systems Group to make sure that it's an equitable process. I just want to note that childcare is a really complex issue that we've been putting mandate fixes on for years in this community. So it's not going to take just one approach to fix childcare. It's going to be a multifaceted approach that we hope that our market study will address. So that's going to include the true cost to provide care in different licensing models, the cost to access care, the demand to access care, and what the capacity and collaboration is among providers and centers. So I can go into more detail in those if you would like me to, but that's just kind of the overview.
Denise, do you mind sharing the timeline? I know we had that meeting the other day.
Yes, so we have had, we've got a commitment that they will start the market study this month with helping us diversify our partners. And the market study won't be complete until October. So our partner really encouraged us not to rush the information data process and the gathering process because it will mess with the equity lens of it.
I'm just gonna, I am just gonna hop in at this point to remind the council of something that I believe came up a little bit earlier out of context, which was that you have until 2024 to obligate the funds, and then until 2026 to expend the funds. We may want to do some checking on that. I think there have been some changes. But my understanding was that that timeline was what remained in the, what they call the final final rule, as opposed to the interim final rule. Don't ask me how to explain the Treasury Department works. And so there would be time to do that. And however, as with our recommendation to the county commission, I believe the task force would recommend a sort of a broad-based allocation for how you want to spend the funds so that all of these groups, whether you devote all of it to childcare or do most of it there and some other, more in other areas, that you'll be able to know and plan for the future budget years where the money's going to go. We're also not asking you to decide to do that right this second. We would expect some further discussion and study among this body, and would encourage you to invite the task force into that conversation as well. But as before, understand that ultimately, the decision about how to spend the funds lies with you.
Well, I want to express my extreme gratitude to the task force. I think our community is so lucky that this broad effort of inclusion was made, and just a really unparalleled opportunity to gather a diverse range of ideas and thoughts from every corner of the community. This is an infusion of money that we can expect only once in a generation. We need to be future-focused, we need to be bold. I appreciate the bold suggestion. Of course, I feel very strongly that childcare is, you know, the bedrock of our economic health and enables people to fully participate in the labor force, as well as really sets our youngest citizens on a path of success. So I look forward to hearing more about the study and how we can be strong partners in some of the deliverables that that study results in. But I don't know if this needs to be figured out right now, but I do think, you know, our city manager and finance director and maybe the task force needs to figure out how this is going to work. Will we house this money in the general fund and a special fund for ARPA? How those funds are allocated through grants, through reimbursement checks? I don't know if you have any feeling for that right now, or if that's too much in the weeds.
Yeah, so my first comment would be I would lean on Angela Richards and the city manager to tell us what the appropriate thing to do is on the accounting side with the funds. My understanding with the final rule is that the local governments are going to be given some rather broad flexibility in how they spend the funds, but the precise matters of how they account for how they spend that, I'm uncertain about. Although I do believe that you will have to spend the funds in a way that you can document that it follows the guidelines and doesn't violate any of their rules.
For sure.
Fair. Angela's nodding at me, so I think I've not said anything untrue at least.
I also feel like this report is certainly going to be a resource moving forward for future budget decisions on other issues that our community has spoken up that they find to be a priority, such as housing and mental health. So I'm not sure how the city can plug in a little more closely on the staffing side to make sure that these efforts move forward. If you have ideas for that, is this task force convening every month still, or?
We are not having regular meetings of the task force moving forward. I believe we would look to both the city and the county staff to initiate the study sessions and the conversation around what we want to do there, presumably with your direction to them to do so. I didn't want to end our time today without giving some more opportunity to speak to the equitable process here and the inclusive nature of the process. So I heard you mention that, and I just wanted to make sure that we put the appropriate emphasis on that. The guidelines themselves are very clear that you have to have an inclusive process and get the input from people in the community. And I'm wondering if Calvin Wright would be willing to speak to that today.
Again, Calvin Wright, 67502, getting used to that. I want to thank the city council, I want to thank, you know, Jeff and Sarah. We had quite a few of the meetings and listening. The Reno County had members there, Randy was there in listening and guiding us. And I want to thank you guys. But I do want to draw your attention to just a couple of points. One point being, the U.S. Treasury Department says throughout the ARPA funding and throughout the documentation that to use these funds to be inclusive. That there are communities, there are folks in our community that have been excluded. Whether intentionally or unintentionally really isn't relevant. The fact is, it's going to take some intentional inclusion to include them in the process. And I think this was a very good step in that direction. I'm really thankful to Community Foundation and the invitation that was extended to the NAACP and the community of color. And I say that because what's reflective in the report from the task force mirrors the census of Reno County. And that is, that's an excellent step forward. I've been to a few of these meetings, and just as you were pulling in the information from Southwest Bricktown, I understand that your effort is, it appears true that you want to hear, you want to include the community, the entire community. Down that vein, I would ask that you keep that intact. As we, say, speak to the Housing Commission or work with K Ready, or, and I would slide backwards again to construction, that you are inclusive of the people who are tearing down that bridge over there, who are actually providing the K Ready, are they being inclusive? Because that workforce that does that, as well as the people who do the decision-making process, I would, it would really be a loss to build this trust by asking the community to come forward and say, hey, we also want childcare. But then to take 17, 18 million dollars and put it in the hands of just white people who understand how to solve a problem for white people would ruin that trust. And without bringing that, you know, and thank you for your resolution on Black History Month, but that's to bring those facts to the forefront of our mind as we make leadership decisions, that we have to make them with the inclusiveness of everyone. So again, the U.S. Department of Treasury who granted us this money, and thank you, asked for inclusion. You guys have echoed that ask for inclusion by listening to the Community Foundation. I would ask you to continue that effort of inclusion as you listen to studies and as you do work with folks who are actually living this out for the long term of inclusion. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Calvin.
Here, here. Any other questions for the task force or for Dr. Eddington?
I wanted to thank Dr. Eddington. I don't know if he can still hear me, but I really appreciated the way the report was put together in an easy-to-understand manner and with lots of data presented graphically, and just beautifully done by you and your students.
I've got a real simple, simple question, okay? 18 million dollars, how much does the county get and how much does the city get?
The county's about 12 of it, and you're about 6 of it. We've done some considerable rounding there, but that's about it.
Well, I'm embarrassed with that because that's always come in my mind, so I got enough cuts to ask you today.
There you go. Yeah, and again, you're not obligated to spend it together, but we would invite the two bodies to work together on how you do that.
Sure.
So, Mayor, where we go from here?
Well, I think the purpose of today's presentation was to present the findings of the task force, for us to digest those and chew on them. And I don't know that there needs to be consensus today, especially as we would like to await the study being done on childcare, as that was deemed to be the number-one issue in the public's mind. So when we get those study results in August, I suspect that Denise or Carrie or someone from that Child Care Systems Group will be here to present those with recommendations on where those funds should go. Again, as mentioned multiple times, we have till 2024 to encumber those funds and 2026 to spend them. So we have the luxury of being thoughtful and thinking long-term.
I believe she said October, not October.
Oh, October, yes. I was trying to speed that up, wasn't I? Other thoughts?
Thank you again.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Okay, we'll begin with you, Steve.
Like always, that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
Like I said before, this weekend I spent with citizens. I appreciate and thank all the citizens that opened the door to me, didn't shoot me, didn't do anything like that, to sit down and listen to me. It takes citizens' commitment, it takes citizens to be there and open their minds. I think you've got a good council now. They're going to open their minds, and they're going to find out what the citizens want. I've seen that over and over. Like I said, I was out there talking to all kinds of committees and all kinds of people. We need that, keep that going. Every time we, before you see me or any other council members come to your door right there, please talk to them. They want to hear from you. They want to know what's going on. So I know I will keep it up. So I know my council members will keep that up, too. So I really want to thank you for that. I was busy this weekend. And thank you for opening your doors to me. I really would appreciate that. Other than that, I just, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. What about you, Greg?
I think I've said all I need to say today.
Okay, wonderful. John?
I'd like to, I want to talk about the resolution that was brought forth last time. And I really thought about this quite a bit over the last couple of weeks. And I looked at it from an aspect of, there's obviously concerns that you brought up. Maybe it wasn't vocalized in a way that we could process it properly. And you're part of the team, we need to take your thoughts seriously. I looked at it quite a bit, and there's really two aspects I took away from it. And one is that we need to recognize our oath to the Constitution of the United States, and that's fair. This is my third meeting, I've taken the oath twice, so I'm somewhat redundant on that report right now. But that we are, and I'm reading in towards it, that we're an active participant in the constitutional republic of the state of Kansas and the United States. Not on our own, but as a participant. The other part of it, in regards to overreaching executive orders, to make a blank statement that we're going to test the constitutionality amongst the five of us without actually going through the process of working with our state representation, without going through the process of honoring the justices of the Supreme Court of the state of Kansas. That's important, too. That's the republic aspect of the constitutional republic. But I say this because we have to work as a team with a lot of differing opinions on things, and that's important. And I don't want you to feel like we just push your concerns off to the side. But I wanted to read into some of the things you were saying and try to digest it a little differently.
Okay, yeah, so one of the things I wanted to bring up was that, I think the title was misleading, I suppose. So I kind of wanted to ask if maybe there's a way we could give it to Paul Brown to digest. And one of the things I thought about was, the resolution would be Hutchinson to be a U.S. constitutional republic-protected city. I know it's a really long title, but maybe there needs to be a little bit more clarity. So there was a lot of newspaper articles and a lot of like clickbait that happened with this the last time, and it really didn't represent what I was trying to say. And it's just because, you know what happened with this pandemic, there was a lot of uncertainties. There's a lot of, where maybe, you know, you have places where you have to have an identification card. I'm not saying it's going to happen in Kansas, but what's going to happen the next time around? So one of my concerns was basically saying, if it's, and right, I use the word clearly violate, meaning if it's like an executive order and a mandate are not laws, right? So it's basically saying that it needs to go through the legislative branch and have clarity before we would enforce it. So like if somebody came in and they were like, said something super crazy, like you have to show your ID before you can go into a business. And that's what was mandated by something. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, this has happened in some of the places around the country. I'm not saying it's going to happen here in Kansas, but the precedent has been set by what has happened with this pandemic. And so we don't know what the government's going to come out with next. What's going to be the next emergency? What's going to be the next thing? And I think we've done a really good job here in Hutchinson, Kansas. But I think the resolution mainly was to say, until the legislative branch has clearly stated that something is constitutional and we can clearly see that there's probability that it will be, that it, like, we understand the Constitution when we're taking our oath of office. That we, that we're not taking our oath not knowing it.
I understand that, but to be honest with you, I mean, a constitutional scholar's going to know a lot more about it than I do. And I'd have to trust someone that sits on a judge bench more than my own opinion on what's constitutional.
It's just saying we're not going to just blindly take whatever executive order or mandate that's given to us. And that's, doesn't matter what party it is. There was a lot of stuff that came out under Trump, and there's a lot of stuff that came out under Biden. And this is like the new rule of law of where people are just not going through the judicial or the legislative process that should happen, under both, I believe, parties, honestly. And I think this is just to remind that we are governed by the people.
I think the oath of office that we take is sufficient, and this is redundancy. I mean, we took an oath. Let's assume the best of each other. Let's assume that we all take the oath we took seriously. Let's assume that we're all devoting countless hours away from our families. Let's assume that we're all devoting countless hours away from our family and our careers to serving on, in an unpaid elected role because we care about this community. Let's just assume the best in each other. I think this is a solution looking for a problem. We don't have a bunch of mandates here in Hutchinson or in Kansas. We also have plenty of avenues laid out in our constitution to address grievances that we see in executive orders or other laws. We have elections for new lawmakers. We have protests and we have the ability to address grievances in courts, which many states and businesses have done successfully during the pandemic. And a lot of those mandates have been declared unconstitutional. So I guess my concern is that this is a distraction that isn't, I'm not sure what it does for our community. How does it make the lives of our citizens better?
Other than informing them how important it is to us to make sure that...
Yeah, I think there's some people that feel that the legislative branch and people in office and stuff have just kind of forgotten that the government's ran by the people. So it's just a resolution confirming our commitment to what this, you know, what our Constitution stands for, individual freedoms, individual rights, the rule of law, all of that stuff, so...
I think having a hearty discussion about this among us right now is, it would suffice in regards to our dedication, even if we have differences of opinion, on moving forward with the oath of office we took and participating in what we can do with the state of Kansas. And knowing full well as, let me rephrase, if an executive order was put out, we would roll with the punches as they come, test it on what powers we have to control within our own community and what we don't have, and what partners we have within our sphere of influence to try to change the outcome, rather than making a blanket statement upfront. Although it is, I will agree, usually it's better to be proactive than reactive. In this case, I think it's better to see what we're fighting against if something comes up to us and then adjust as needed, not to assuage the importance of what you're trying to bring to the table.
Okay, did you have other items, John?
It's going to snow. Keep that in mind. Be safe. That's all I have.
Sarah?
All right. I do, actually. And I know we've talked about, but I want to bring something up. I want to bring up the traffic light at Fifth and Adams and the traffic light at Fifth and Monroe. And was wondering if we could direct staff to look at if we can, I know with the Fifth and Monroe, it comes down to a left turn, like where, you know, you come down on your lane and there's a left turn that people sit there, but there's no left turn signal that could allow some of the cars that are waiting to turn to actually turn. So there's a lot of congestion at those two lights. And that's one of the main reasons why you have so many accidents at Fifth and Adams, is because when you have people trying to turn and you only get one car light, and then you have two people pulling out in the middle that now, when this person's pulled out farther and this person's pulled out farther, you can't see if there's cars coming this way. And then they try to go and they get T-bone. And I think it's a big issue that we've ignored, the amount of accidents that happen at those lights, the amount of congestion that happens at those lights. And I would think that a simple restriping and putting in a left turn signal that allows four to five cars to make those left-hand turns out of that intersection could greatly improve the traffic. Like you have at Seventeenth and Monroe has a light that's similar to that. You can still yield on grain. It's not only on the traffic light. It just allows for more of the traffic to flow better, allowing more cars so that you don't end up with people being scared to come out because you don't know if this car's flying out in front of you. And it's just a real big problem that I think we can't ignore any longer. I mean, we have accidents there every month.
Jeff or Jeff, do you have thoughts on that? On that particular intersection?
There's a lot of Jeffs.
Jeff or Jeff? We've got a lot of Jeffs. We have three Jeffs in the room.
Too many. Again, Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. We can take a look at that. Part of that might be for the fact that some of the cabinets and those types of things aren't sized to accept some of those options. So there is potentially a good cost to that under the traffic. And we can look at that. I don't know that for sure at those two locations, but we did just at Fifth and Monroe change some of the traffic patterns of that. We are doing a trial right now on some, well, it's a new type of camera as well as operating system. So it's more as on a, on an as-needed basis. If people come up, they get a turn or get a go and those types of things.
But I guess what I'm saying is, having that bigger light casing...
And that's good. If we, if we can accommodate that simply, it might not be as simple as just adding a light, is what I'm saying, with respect to some of our equipment and our controllers at that location. So those things have been asked in the past, but we've had to, it might take a fifteen thousand dollar equipment and budgets with respect to traffic signals are pretty tight.
Just really, it's hard. You can only get one car through.
No, 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 I get it.
Yeah. And so what happens is you have all these cars turning after it's red and people are T-boning each other like every other week.
Sarah, I can answer that for you. I was a former traffic signal technician for the City Huts. We don't have the capacity yet at Fifth and Adams. The controller does his all capacity out. And like he said, you'd have to add a bigger cabinet. You'd have to add a bigger controller for Fifth and Adams. It's, like he said, it takes more than that. The light would take another phase in it, where they don't have the room right now. And if the cabinet's still the same when I was there, then they don't have the capacity right now to do it. They'd have to buy a bigger controller. I believe that's a two-phase controller over there. Yeah, it's a two-phase controller. You'd have to almost use a three-phase controller or a four-phase controller. And that takes more money.
Well, maybe we can look at where that sits in our priorities and the budget when we have those conversations for next year, if you don't mind. Thank you, Jeff.
And I do add that one on Monroe Street, that's, you guys did a good job there. Is that just a one-camera system? Is that one camera doing all that?
It is just a one-camera system. It's something we're trying out. It's actually a trial. They're letting us not rent it, but use it for a while to see how it acts at that location.
Is it going to a full actuation or is it semi-actuation? Do you know, Jeff?
I don't know that. It's based on the presence or absence of cars at each of those locations. So if there's someone there, it'll change.
Correct. And that's a full actuation. It seems to be working pretty good. I stopped and watched it and I seen that one camera on there. So it takes, it takes all the, yeah, it's doing good.
Prior to that, it was just a timed signal and that...
Time-based, yeah.
And so we thought that was a good place to try that. Because that's a tough one where you sit there for a while and then it's coming from either direction at some point.
Okay.
Okay, do you have any other items, Sarah?
No.
Okay. I had just a few things. I wanted to remind people of the Chamber's Legislative Forum this Saturday at Stringer Fine Arts. That will be at eight thirty a.m. to ten a.m. The public is invited to attend. And if you're interested in meeting your state legislative delegation, they will all be there, or they're all invited to attend. We'll see what the weather brings. But I really encourage you to attend and put forth some questions to your state lawmakers and you can stay afterward. They usually allow you to converse with them afterwards. So those are always great events put on by the Chamber and we appreciate their efforts there. Again, wanted to thank everybody who came to the meeting and made their opinions known. And I feel like Hutchinson is really unique in having so much civic engagement. And again, it does change the conversation in a manner for the good. Also, I would ask the council that, moving forward, if there are issues with staff performance, please, please use as respectful language as possible. And in accordance with Chapter Two of our city code, try to funnel concerns through the city manager before airing them in a public meeting. It's easy to remember in this fervor of anti-government sentiment that, or it's easy to forget that these are people with families who are just trying to do the best and be of service to the public. So let's treat them with the respect they should be treated with. And with that, I will pass it over to you, Jeff. I did have one question about pre-treatment of roads. And if you could outline what our strategy is for the community in, you know, looking at the storms coming.
You bet. Depending upon what weather you watch, we could get anywhere between four and eleven inches, some with ice, some not. And generally, what we focus on is pre-treatment of elevated structures and primary arterials. I suspect there probably wouldn't be anything different in this particular pre-treatment event. The only time you see pre-treatment avoided is when you know with certainty you're going to have a significant rainfall in advance of a freezing event because at that point you just wash everything off the pavement. So I can confirm that strategy this time with Brian and his crew, but I suspect that's how we'll be handling this one.
That'd be great. And I know Rebecca always does a good job of getting that out on social media, but people are going to be curious about that.
Yeah. I've even had people ask, what is that particular liquid that appears to have been spilt on the elevated structure there? It's brine, but there are other methods of treating, too.
I had one person ask me, do you...
Oh, Brian is here.
Oh, Brian, I'm sorry.
Do you guys go on Hendrix? Do you guys only go up to Thirtieth Street or do you go to the county line?
We go to the county line.
Okay, that was my one question that somebody asked. Because they saw that you, that wasn't up to the county line. It's like stopped at Thirtieth Street, the like...
No, we do go up to the county line.
Have you just not made it up there yet?
I'm sorry, not the county line, but the city line.
The city line, yeah, that's what I mean.
This is like Thirty-Fifth Street or something along those lines.
Yeah, Thirty-Fifth, off of Hendrix.
Off of Hendrix.
They didn't see it there, apparently. They, it stopped at Thirtieth.
Okay, well, we'll make sure, but that is on our route to do that. Yeah, and we have pre-treated the roads yesterday with assault brine.
Oh, okay.
And we are going to twelve-hour shift starting at eight o'clock tonight. So we'll be staffed through the night and then another crew comes in tomorrow morning for another twelve-hour shift and then, so until the storm's passed.
Oh, wow. Well, big thanks to our Public Works crew and the great work they do, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I know that two meetings ago, I've missed a couple of meetings. It's nice to be back, by the way, and thanks for the coverage that you all provided. Mayor Rebecca, thank you for the state of the city. I think I'm in full mode here, so it feels good to be back. Thank you. There was discussion, two meetings ago, of enough topics of discussion that would warrant work sessions to be conducted, probably multiple work sessions based upon the topics. And I do have some dates that I could throw out verbally and then follow up with an email. February eighth, that is a non-council meeting Tuesday. You could do day or night. February fifteenth, that is a council day. Evening would be preferable in that case. And then February twenty-second, that is a non-council Tuesday. Day or night would work on that one. I'll follow up and shoot those dates out to you all. So then we can get an idea as to what we actually want to focus on as the effort of those sessions.
Perfect.
Also, with discussion of the ARPA funds and the work of the task force, you all may recall the early discussion of what I proposed to be a fifty-fifty split amongst the funds. I think at times that's probably not a very popular suggestion because it's not enough and at other times it's not popular because it's too much. Under that scenario, I would engage with Hutch Foundation to make sure that it's a feasible way to allocate those funds and to have those funds managed out to these outside organizations. We already do that. That's a practice that's already been done for many years here. And I believe that it would conform to the auditing protocols that follow the federal act on that. So that's something that we will, in the future, certainly suggest and we will hold to the fifty-fifty recommendation. As you guys know, we have a ton of infrastructure that is non-budgeted that's going to eat at our budget in a pretty significant way. We've got the atrium. We've got certainly Woody Seat in some form or fashion. We're going to have those major projects staring at us. And that is going to impact our ability to have bond coverage for other projects in the future. So we'll certainly revisit that and appreciate the work of the committee. Mayor, with that, I'll rest. I'll rest for any questions. Thank you very much.
Do you have a feel for how long the executive session needs to be?
Better make it forty-five.
Said, we have a motion to recess into executive session until eleven forty-five or...
I'll make the motion to recess in executive session and return at noon.
Second. Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas Pickler?
Yes.